All right. Good evening, everybody. Why don't we go ahead and get started? I think some of our council members are in route, so they'll be joining us shortly. So, welcome to the public, welcome to the planning commissioners as well as being here with us tonight. So, we've got two items that are on the agenda this evening. One is the update on the Harris Teeter project or the Rushmark project. And then, the city council, without the planning commissioner, is going to be going into some discussions about budget issues as well, and I'll tee that up when we get to that item. So, why don't we go ahead and get started. And as I've previously disclosed, as a prudential matter, I own property at 243 Gundry Drive, and my wife Bernadette McBaruch is the president of the Winter Hill Community Association, and I can consider these matters fairly and objectively in the public interest. So, with that, further ado, I'm going to have staff kind of lead the charge this evening, and then we'll turn it over to the developer for their comments and their presentation. So, Wyatt, do you want to turn to Gary?
Sure.
Great. Thank you, Wyatt. All right. So, why don't we?
Patrick Carney with the Rushmark. There we go. I'll just mention, in case a few aren't familiar with the project, this is a special exception, and it's for a new mixed-use project that's approximately 372,000 square feet on about 2.6 acres with residential rental apartments above ground floor retail. The first floor retail is about 63,000 square feet, would include a Harris Teeter grocery store at about 60,000, and then a storefront retail consisting of several stores, approximately 3,400 square feet. And then, there'd be a six-story residential building on top of the one floor of commercial with proposed 282 multifamily apartment buildings above the ground floor. The redevelopment project being a special exception, the land use actions that are required for are a special exception for residential uses and a mixed-use development, and a special exception for a height bonus, in this case, 15 feet above the maximum building height. And that request is for 90 feet, and potentially, in a special exception category, you can go up to 115 feet. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to the developer. He originally had submitted an application in October. There'd been a work session like this with the joint planning commission and city council on December 12th. We raised a number of issues and questions at that time. Staff also provided comments, as well as neighborhood comments, were collectively looked at and comprehensively looked at by the developer. They revised the plans and resubmitted in late January, and they're here to update us tonight as to those changes and how they have, you know, addressed the previous comments. So, I'll turn it back over to them, and then I think I'll have some comments at the end as the city manager indicated. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Thank you. I'm Patrick Carney from Rushmark Properties. I'm going to present to you the latest version of what we're proposing for the Harris Teeter mixed-use project at the old post office site. Some of you are up to date on this, but I want to make sure everyone understood the changes we've made through our proposal. To start off with, I think we all know the site we're talking about, it's the post office site where the city and economic development authority had two parking lots next to it. We had a conversations with Harris Teeter about locating here, and been working with the EDA of Falls Church and city staff to put together a viable plan to incorporate a urban Harris Teeter store with the necessary bells and whistles that they need and the necessary parking that they require. And we came up with a plan that satisfies Harris Teeter. It introduces underground parking for Harris Teeter, and then to justify the economics of the project, we are buying part of the ground from the city. We have a residential component on top, which we're seeing in a lot of different instances in the area with grocers underneath apartments in this case. And it's a more urban density master plan that's not inconsistent with what Falls Church was looking for in these locations in center city. Includes, and this project includes three levels of underground parking, which is at considerable expense. So, with that backdrop, we submitted a property, a project initially in October with input from staff that was a single-story retail on the first level, which we call the podium, which was a 60,000-square-foot Harris Teeter with some ancillary retail to be determined of about 3,000 feet. That's about as much as we could get on the retail level on the site, given the site dimensions. And we had 294 residential units in five stories above that, at that point, was going to be considered as wood construction. That was pushing a lot of the density back towards the neighborhood. We were asking for a special exception on the buffer areas back towards the neighborhood at that point. There were a lot of things that, in that plan, that subsequently, through the process and meeting with the neighbors on several different occasions, staff comments, city comments, planning commission and city council comments, we went back to the drawing board and resubmitted our plan, which is what I kind of wanted to make sure everyone understood tonight. You want to go ahead and start? Let me hit you with the sales job on the front, and that is reemphasize the project benefits here for the city of Falls Church. We believe that we strove, we have, since the beginning, tried to meet, have this meet what are the comprehensive plan guidelines for the city, and we've worked with staff to try and do so. This is not really of the size, scale, or density. It's not inconsistent with what was perceived for the city of Falls Church in this area. We wanted to do an urban mixed-use environment, very pedestrian-friendly, which we think we've accomplished, with very good architecture. The, from Falls Church's perspective, the net economic benefit of this proposal is substantial. I think it's higher than most other proposals that I think the city has considered in the last several years. A net fiscal impact of what we're showing now to be 1.32 million from the economic model that the city puts together. We had a separate economic model done by Robert Charles Lesser Company, which basically confirmed those numbers. They brought in some additional attributes and things that weren't, it was part of the city economic model, but it didn't greatly increase it substantially to talk about here. That's a $22 million net present value over a 20-year period in tax money to the city of Falls Church, which is not inconsequential. Robert Charles Lesser equated that to almost a four-and-a-half cent per hundred assessed value reduction, if that makes any sense. High-quality construction, we, through the second part of this, have committed to, and I'll get into why, doing a concrete construction job, which we think allows a full masonry skin to make this look more urban, a little bit more Class A than some other projects that you might see with podium development. We are committed to a four-sided project, which will be masonry, that you're allowed to do with concrete. So, that actually, through that process, added a lot of cost to the project, but we think is worth it, given the other benefits that which we received and which we think the city of Falls Church will receive. Let's see, certainty of commitments. We are going to have commitment to affordable dwelling units. Right now, we're at a 6%, which is the city guideline, I guess you could call it. We are going to do a lead silver building here, which is substantial on the cost side, something that we, as a development company and as contractor, are very pushing for and have done on other projects. We are going to obviously make a proper contribution or a contribution to schools based on our density. We are going to develop a more, much more intensive transportation demand management program, which we'll get into a little bit later. And there are some other particulars with regard to the Harris Teeter, which we'll get into, too. The timing on this is we've got a tenant who wants to get in and start functioning at Falls Church and get taxes paid, and we have great demand on rental apartments in this submarket right now in this normal area. So, as developer, we're anxious to get this started as soon as possible. And part of the deal within, in buying the city ground is to get this thing going as quickly as possible because it's in everybody's interest to do so, assuming that the design and particulars, the project, meet everyone's expectations. You can go to the next one. Okay. I might be repeating myself here a little bit, so I'll try and speed up. This is a mixed-use project, rental apartments above retail. We are trying to push pedestrian-friendly. We are trying to do all the things that you're seeing in most urban locations with regard to transit-oriented development, bicycles, Zip Cars, bicycle sharing, pedestrian options, all of those things we're trying to push through the transportation demand management program, which we'll talk about a little bit. It does meet with the comprehensive plan guidelines, as I said. It's high-quality design. We're doing concrete. We're doing masonry, and we're doing it on four sides. It's a new development, it includes a full-service grocery store. We have retail holding on Broad Street to have more of an urban feel. I'll let the architect walk you through that a little bit. We're going to have a model a little bit later. 60,000 square feet is the grocery store requirement from Harris Teeter. That's the size that they are doing most of their stores now. We have some ancillary retail space. We have 265 market-rate rental apartments, which was reduced through the process. I'll get back to that. 17 affordable dwelling units, and the amenities, like for any new Class A mixed-use project, quite a substantial amenity package that requires a community room, game room, pool area, fitness area, storage for the tenants, bicycle storage, that type of stuff. We are doing underground parking. We have two levels of parking dedicated to the residential uses. Our parking ratios, which we've gone through on a couple of different sessions on this, essentially, we are parking Harris Teeter per their requirements that they need, given their history on running Harris Teeter stores in the area. And we have some backup as to how that is. And then, we're also parking the residential on a per-unit basis that's comparable to other things that Falls Church has approved of before and that we think meet or exceeds the market in terms of needed parking ratio. Okay. So, what did we do different from the first time? The first thing we heard loud and clear, and we did meet several times with the neighborhood group, was that they felt like we were right on top of them. There's townhouses that are only 10, 14 feet from the property line back there that have back, short backyards. And so, that was a big problem, was the buffer, and we were actually asking for a waiver from the buffer requirement at that time, which we've since gone back to the drawing board, and we're not going to ask for that waiver. We are going to provide the necessary buffers as required by the code. There was an issue about transformers, which we relocated. I'm getting kind of into detail here. The other thing we did in order to make this deal work economically, because we are doing a concrete building, we are doing three levels of underground parking, and we're not getting the land for free, was that we wanted to try and keep or get close to our unit count, but we wanted to move the density away from the neighborhood. So, we pushed the density up towards Broad Street, probably where it's more appropriate. We went from a five-story residential building to a six-story residential building on top of the podium. That still is only 90 feet tall. You could go up to 115 feet under the guidelines of the city with a special exception there. So, we're not pushing the limit on that. That allowed, we reduced our unit count from 294 to 282 when we did that. And what that also allowed us to do was to, since we were moving the massing back, it allowed us to also look at what was a big problem for a lot of people, which was the loading dock. And we looked at a lot of different ways to try and make the loading dock work differently on the site. And we came up with really the only solution that works for Harris Teeter programmatically and for the rest of the project. So, the back of the house, the loading dock, got moved a little bit closer towards Broad Street, but more importantly, it got enclosed, and it's now underneath what is the retail podium, which we think alleviates a lot of the concerns, not all of them, but a lot of the concerns of the neighborhood in terms of noise and vision and smell, et cetera, that might be coming back there now. Keep in mind, they do have a loading dock back there now and have for some time from the post office. But we wanted to try and respond to that notion. And we'll get into that in the kind of architectural presentation. We think that's a pretty good, not perfect, but pretty good representation of trying to respond to other people's needs on this. We did reduce the density a little bit. We're at 265 market-rate units. We are undergrounding utilities. There were some questions from the neighbors on some back telephone poles, which we can take care of as part of this process. We are going to include this, just to get through the normal regulations today, will be a huge improvement in terms of stormwater outflow. A lot of the problems that we've heard about that are a little downstream will somewhat be corrected by just a newer project per the regulations handling stormwater runoff, which would be a bonus for the area. We revised our parking analysis and parking assessment because we redid the orientation of the truck traffic. We initially had the trucks coming in on Broad and exiting on Annandale. We changed that one way to reverse direction. We did that for a couple of different reasons, because that was kind of one of the concerns, was how the truck traffic was going to flow, but also, we needed to reorient the loading dock, and it made sense, given the turning radiuses that we had, to reorient that road. And then, we also, given all this and given some of the concerns, we are committed to a pretty extensive traffic demand management program, which we're going to get into. Okay. Just as kind of a guideline, I'm kind of going from Plan A to Plan B, or the latest. This yellow is where we had residential closer to the neighborhood that we've pulled back by allowing the residential portion to go up one story. So, one of the questions we've gotten, a lot of things, was the setbacks and how they changed. We now have a 20-foot landscape buffer here that does not require a wall along the back line, which we are willing to work with these neighbors to figure out how they want to make that happen, but with no wall being required here, and this being our building wall, this will feel a lot more like the backyards to those units and/or common space for Winter Hill. At this location, we had some site concerns, and we could only fit in a 15-foot buffer. Again, it's not requiring a variance, it's allowed per code. That puts that wall along this line here, which we want to work again with the neighbors. It's called for a six-foot masonry wall, and we plan, we plan on landscaping the heck out of this to try and make it go away as much as possible visually. We moved the building back, you know, it was 36 feet here, this went to 48 feet, that was 20 feet, it went to 31 feet. This was 47 feet, it went to 77 feet. We pulled this way back from Annandale Road by another 50 feet, which was what we were allowed to do because we want the extra story and committed to doing a concrete building. Okay. I'm going to pass this off to Cheryl from Grove Slade, who can talk a little bit more intelligently about what we're planning on the transportation demand management, which we plan to upgrade a little bit, so.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Sharp. I'm with Grove Slade Associates, a transportation consultant for this project, and just wanted to go over the TDM program for the project. As you know, the TDM program is really about moving people and reducing the impact of the vehicles on the road. So, the first thing we do in order to, in that program, is to appoint a transportation demand management program coordinator. This coordinator is the focal point for all city contact, community contact, you know, contact within the building, you know, between the residents and, and any questions they might have. There's active marketing and ride-share marketing, and what this is, is, for instance, transit brochures, you know, in the lobby of a residential building in a kiosk, or actively marketing to the bicycle community, because we have, we know that we have great bicycle storage on the site. So, additional marketing, ride-share marketing, for instance, you could put together a car-sharing program where residents can sign up if they find that they have to, if they're going to the same place for work than residents within the building, this is a ride-sharing matching program. Interactive Internet and Internet resources, there'd be links on the development webpage, the homepage, and to all different types of transit alternatives, to commuterconnections.org. And it's just another way for the residents to be able to get their alternative transportation information. We'll be billing a bus stop on this side that will include a signage, shelter, and landing pad. There is one across, a matching one across the street, so we make sure that we, that's already there today, so we have both directions accounted for. Transit subsidy programs for employees, such as like the Smart Benefits program, which is a pre-tax program. So, people can save money on their transit expenses. This could also be providing Smart Trip cards to residents as they at least sign up. We're also going to have substantial amount of bicycle parking on the site, approximately 110 spaces for bicycles for storage, within the storage spaces in the building as well. And we're also willing to work with the county, with the city on capital bike share when that does come to the city, which is a bike-sharing program that's implemented in DC and Arlington and Alexandria, and I believe it will be coming to Falls Church relatively soon. And pedestrian amenities, there will be a pedestrian path coming through the garage that will provide a safe connection between West Broad and Annandale Road. There's a missing pedestrian connection at the intersection of West Broad and Little Falls Street that will provide to help that, to provide those pedestrian connections to the community. Car-sharing programs, such as Zip Car, there'll be a couple of spots designated within the parking garage where, so residents do not have to own their own car, and they can just, you know, come downstairs and, after signing up online with Zip Car and seeing if the car is available, they can just go down and put in their little passcode and get the keys to the car, and it's on an hourly basis, I believe. And then, also, just to make sure that all of these programs are working and you are getting a benefit to reducing traffic on the road, we'll, to, you know, every couple of years, provide a transportation survey and performance monitoring and tweak the program at that time to make sure that we are getting those reductions and also, you know, if there is something that can be done better, you know, and that that be done at that time. So, it's meant to be a moving program.
Thanks, Cheryl. This is not unusual. I know Jim Snyder knows that they're doing this in Arlington and Fairfax and downtown, and we're committed to this as well. We think making these more pedestrian-oriented and trying to steer people to public transportation kind of removes some of the traffic flow problems and/or parking situations that develop as areas urbanize. So, I'll summarize real quick, and then I'm going to hand it off to Doug Carter here to walk through a little bit more in detail the architectural. But we think, obviously, this project doesn't solve every problem for Falls Church, and it doesn't hit every button for everybody in this room, but we think overall, we've made a lot of changes to help it make more sense for people. We think in the greater scheme of things, it's a great economic development success for Falls Church, bringing extra tax dollars. We think we're committed to continue to listen to the people involved in trying to craft this to make it more amenable and more acceptable to people. We think this will be a great retail location. We think Harris Teeter will be a fabulous amenity of the community. We're hitting all the hot buttons in terms of well-designed density. We're doing concrete building. We're going to have affordable housing. We're going to do lead design. It's going to be mixed-use. It's a lot of the things that the city has said that they want in their downtown core, and we feel like we're meeting that need. So, I'm going to let Doug Carter from Davis Carter Scott walk you through a couple of slides of the building, and then an animation of a model that we have of the building, which I think some of you all have been looking forward to seeing.
Thank you, Patrick. On that last slide, I think you saw at the top, vision. And I have to say that this is really the vision of Falls Church for this area of your city. And Falls Church put together a two-page list of design requirements and goals to reach. And I think, if we talk about vision, we're trying to put the physical clothing on that vision that was espoused by your city. And so, you've been down in the weeds with all of those statistics, and now we can look at some images of what it will be. And so, the first one is just literally the building on its site. And so, obviously, West Broad Street, South Maple Avenue, West Annandale here. And so, what we're showing is that contrary to where we were before, where we were bringing trucks in this way, backing them up and having them exit onto Annandale, we're now reversing that, as you heard. And so, trucks will come in here and will move up to the loading dock, which is enclosed from this point. And so, as they come up this slope, they will disappear inside the building. And so, all of that noise, all of the beeping from the reverse horns should be, I won't say totally diminished, but at least it will be diminished to the point where it won't be an irritant to the people who are living closest to it. The other traffic patterns are, as before, we are coming in and out for the Harris Teeter parking, which is on a level below Harris Teeter itself, and then we are coming in and out from Annandale. And at the moment, we've got two entrances and exits, so we can come in here and come into the parking from this entrance, or we can come directly in and out of the lowest level of the garage from elevation 316. So, if you will, one of the points that was made at our last meeting was that we really need to articulate the building, and I think it was a result of looking at one of the perspectives, the first one that you saw tonight. But I would like you, if you would please, to look at the really intense articulation that we've created, not just along West Broad Street, but all the way around on Annandale too. And I think that the setbacks that we've now achieved from the property line to the main body of the building are indeed quite dramatic. You heard some from Patrick. What I will tell you is, we actually took a measurement across Broad Street, and I think you can agree that Broad Street is just that, it's a fairly broad street. From this face of the building to that face of that building is 78 feet. So, that gives you a relationship in terms of looking at the dimensions that we have created around the south face of the building on this side. So, treat, if we can go to the next one, please. I think for the people... I think for the people who haven't been here before, and I'm not sure how many there are because we've had several meetings and we've got into a lot of detail, but I don't think it hurts to remind you that we are responding to one of Falls Church's principal requirements. And I think that was a condition of the sale of the city's land in this area here, that we focus on bringing a high-class grocer to this area. That grocer, we have designed, I think, for Harris Teeters, and they have proved to be very flexible, very cooperative, and they do really take seriously your concerns. And so we've had some wonderful, I will say, arrangements with Harris Teeter, and I think they're more than willing to work with the neighbors and make this as easy as possible. Now, earlier, I was talking with Yasna Bielich, who's sitting back there, raise your hand, Beja, so that everyone can recognize you, who is our lead designer on this project. And she's been in touch with Harris Teeter, and I think the number was four trucks a day and 14 delivery vans. Okay, so there's been a lot of numbers thrown around. I even read in your own report, 2,400 trips a day coming in and out of this, and I don't know where those numbers came from. And thirty-two, those numbers are, I think, a gross exaggeration. And so what we need to do is to really, as we move forward, make sure that we're working with Harris Teeter, and we can answer all of the questions that you have and make the arrangements that we've made in other places in terms of restricting the hours when the trucks can come to the site and how that whole operation will work. So, to summarize, here's West Broad Street. Here is a 20-foot-wide sidewalk. It is designed to the city's standards. It is wide enough to allow us to have street-side cafes, seating, and tables outside. But we've gone further. We literally have an activated front all the way along Broad Street. And then as we come into our parking area, we've created this recess in Broad Street itself, and that is the location of an outdoor seating area for Harris Teeter, which is there, obviously, for the community. And there are steps which come up from the sidewalk here because of the drop in the road, and so that can be used in conjunction with Harris Teeter. And if you're familiar with Harris Teeter, we have one very close to us in Tyson's Corner at West Park, and they have terrific food. And it's great for your lunchtime salads and good, healthy food. So we anticipate that that will get great usage there. This is the 60,000-square-foot floor plate that Harris Teeter requires. And it's true, it's bigger than some of the other Harris Teeters that we have designed, but it is the state of the art. And so they are bringing their best and most, I will say, most diverse store to Falls Church. We've got the entrance, main entrance into our residential at this point, that's the blue area, and then we've got the 3,400 square feet of other retail. What is that? We don't know. We would like to think that that could be a restaurant that can open out onto Broad Street itself. Coming around on the south side, we talked about the entrances in from the back, but you can see as the trucks come up here, they will pull up to this point, and there's a gentle slope here, so they will just back straight in to the loading dock. And that is all from this point on enclosed. As they then start to move out, they will move up to Broad Street and will exit with a right turn on Broad Street. So we think that we've simplified that movement dramatically. As I mentioned before, we can drop now, I think, to the next level below. Well, okay, just a detail. We do have Harris Teeters loading here, as you see, but also we've enclosed the loading for the residential building as well. And so here we have the elevators for the residential building. We have loading and trash here for the residential building itself. And so we have a straight shot straight into the freight elevator that takes you as an incoming or an outgoing resident with your own loading. Okay, Treat, next. Okay. This is West Broad Street. This is the in-and-out that we just talked about. As you come in, you actually swing around, and as you swing around, you will be instantly aware of this area, which will be both brightly lit and will have daylight spilling down into it from Broad Street. That is where we have escalators, elevators, and cartolators. Cartolator is that, is that, it's like a mobile walkway, if you will, that you can bring your cart down to this pickup and drop-off point here, or you can bring it down in the elevators. And so as you come in, you'll know exactly where you're supposed to go, and then you find your parking place. You come back, you pick up your groceries, and you can exit this way, or you can exit down onto Annandale. Now, we, you heard Cheryl talk about a safe pedestrian walkway. And so coming from the south side of Annandale and close to the park, we have a pedestrian way that comes straight through, marked and designated, so that you can come through the building itself and out this way onto West Broad Street. So when it's cold, like it was yesterday and today, you can actually walk through here, out of the wind and out of the rain. But that obviously will be well-lit and protected all the time. So Treat, let's go. This is just for your information. The parking deck itself is this shape, and so there is the Harris Teeters parking on the top level. And then there are two levels for residential parking, P2 and Treat, P3. And P3 is slightly, slightly different, just simply because we have provided the number of cars deemed necessary for the project. This takes you up, and so this is literally to show you the individual apartments on a typical residential floor. But now let's go to the images. And so again, what you're looking at is, in every one of these instances, a green roof. We heard the comment about keeping this as a non-walkable green roof. I think in actual fact, if we were to keep planting, and we will show you planting, we really have made a heavy commitment to very, very heavy-duty landscaping, which you'll see in a moment. But I think it's reasonable to say that we could have a planting area that would actually make it very difficult to sort of walk to the edge of our roof so that they could look, that people could look down into the yards of the people back here. Those yards, you will see in a moment, have, in a sense, and this is not for me, this is for Patrick and the homeowners and the homeowners association, but this is extending, sorry, sorry. So this is really the buffer, but that buffer is essentially extending the backyards of those people that are living closest to it. And we hope that we can demonstrate that with some really elegant landscaping, we can dramatically enhance your backyard experience and provide you, at the same time, with a great deal of privacy. That is the intent. We haven't got to the species of trees, but we'll show you some images that can help you visualize what can happen. This is just simply a section through the site from West Broad Street to Annandale. And so you see how, from West Broad Street, you walk straight in at grade to Harris Teeters. This is the slope of the site down to Annandale. And so you can see, as we come in from Annandale, and you will see these in a moment, you can actually drive in from Annandale and come straight into the parking here. And Annandale drops to elevation 316, which is this elevation. And so further to the east on Annandale, we can come straight into that garage elevation as well. So we can keep the traffic moving, keep it clean, and keep it segregated. The retail parking segregated from the residential parking, which we think is a very desirable thing. Treat. So these are flat, these are elevations, but they're a necessary part of our presentation before we show you a fly-around. You're looking here at West Falls, West Broad Street's elevation. So the west is here, the east is coming down here, and you can see the slope of the road that starts up here at 340 and actually comes in here at the garage at elevation 330. So there's a 10-foot drop. And then you just move down into the garage area, so you feel almost as if you're driving in on grade as you're coming into the Harris Teeters parking area. The whole front. And again, this is a city vision. Jim Snyder and all of his good troops have put some pretty careful, well, I will say the city, too, put some pretty careful guidelines together. And so the entire frontage is glass, is active, and it's retail, or it is our residential entrance, which is at that point here. Harris Teeter is absolutely straight as an arrow down the center line of Little Falls Road. And so we will create a very dramatic entrance to Harris Teeters with signage and with lighting. And one of the major articulation components of the frontage of the building is this big recess here with a deck over the top of Harris Teeters. We'll show you that. I would like you to notice that, if you will, in just a moment. This is the west elevation, so the Annandale access is here. We come slowly up the slope, and then this is the end of this building wing as it projects out towards the west. Treat. Then we have the other two elevations. This is the east elevation. And while this, well, actually, I think we feel that this is actually a well-articulated wall, but we very much anticipate that ultimately that wall is going to disappear. The building above it, the residential building, is set back from this wall, and we anticipate that at some point in the future, there will be another development here which will cover a lot, if not all, of that wall, in the same way that we're creating our podium here. And then this is the Annandale elevation. And so we have the garage projecting out as a low, low mass, and then set back from there, the residential building. This is the way in through an archway, and then this is where the trucks go up to Broad Street. Those are elevations. What I'd like to say, too, is that we got a lot of good comments the last time we were here. And these comments ranged from your own. We had comments about the architecture. We yet have to go to the designer view board. We have some different thoughts on the architecture, so it's an evolutionary process. It always is, and it always will be. So we expect that, not the massing, but some of the detailed architecture will change and will actually enhance the contribution that I think this project can make to Falls Church as we move forward. Treat, let's go. So here is a perspective along West Broad Street. And so you're looking at our Harris Teeter retail deck here. You can see the steps that bring you up from the sidewalk. Obviously, handicap access is through Harris Teeters to get out on the deck. You're seeing a lot of articulation. And so the building moves in and out, in and out, as it moves along West Broad Street. So it creates a really smaller-scale, appropriate Falls Church to the building and to the architecture. So Treat, let's go. And so this is just a series, before we fly you around, literally, just a series of perspectives that show you in increasing detail how the project is evolving. And so Treat, just keep clicking these. Coming around to Annandale, hold it here, Treat, a second. This is the wing of the parking structure that's coming out towards Annandale, with the building set back a long way, 50 feet back from this face. This is where the trucks will go, and this is giving you an indication of the landscaping that we are committed to providing for you, good citizens who are living around about. It's going to be a mix of planting, so there will be evergreens, there will be deciduous, there will be flowering trees. But what we're indicating here, just so that you can see it clearly, is the usage of evergreens of the Lebanon cedar type, which are tall, columnar, and can actually create literally a green wall if they're planted correctly and are maintained correctly in terms of their growth. And so it can create as dense as this appears. It can actually create that kind of feeling and can dramatically enhance not just the sense of privacy, because that's a fairly dense landscape buffer that should prevent the apartment people looking down or you looking up to them, but it will also enhance the rear yards on our property, not on your property. But that is obviously, we're not proposing a fence to separate our property from your property on your backyard. So essentially, it's extending your backyard by an additional 20 feet. So Treat, this is then the view from Annandale, and that is the entrance into the lower level of the parking for the residents. This is our main entrance where residents and the actual Harris Teeter trucks will be coming in. Go, Treat. Okay, so this is really the entrance into Harris Teeters parking. So Harris Teeters is this floor above. So as you come in from Annandale, you will drive in, and that gray part there is actually the interior of the garage. Okay, there's just a shot of some of the planting that we're talking about. And so these are evergreens, which, as we plant them, we expect to be fairly significant in size. We can give you the exact specifications, but a combination of evergreen and deciduous really screens dramatically the two buildings, yours and this apartment building, one from another. Treat. Okay, well, you know, that is one we took from the backyard, and so literally, you can't see the apartment building, given this type and this, this species of planting. Treat. And so it goes around here. We took these at various points all the way around here so that you get an idea of what it looks like from your backyard. We actually felt like we could fly up to the top levels of the apartment buildings and look down. And so what we were just looking at were perspectives from down here. What we're looking at now is a perspective that is taken from somebody living on the top floor, and so they will be looking at this. I talked about the green roofs. And so here, we're looking at planting areas that are along the edge of our roof. And we try very hard to listen to what you're saying, and I think that this planting area can be deepened and can be a type of planting that would discourage anyone from trying to fight their way through it. You know, maybe those are thorn bushes or something, so that it would be even more discouraging, okay? So that, so that we need to, we need to listen, we need to respond, we need to be sensitive. And so I think we can really respond and do a good job in this way. Treat. And so this is, again, actually, you're looking here from the top floor down at the houses. And so I think if we can do this, and you have the commitment from the developer, Rushmark, to do this, that we can really, we can really make a very significant contribution, not just to the environment, but to the privacy of both sides of this equation. Okay, okay, good. I will speed up. Treat. I was just told we have a 69-second animation coming up. This was a concern to a lot of people. And so you've got winter, spring, and fall, which are identical, obviously, as the sun comes north and south of the equator, and you've got summer. So the toughest one for everybody is obviously winter. And so if we look at the winter shadow, you can see that it is following this line. Don't pay any attention to this, these are the shadows created by the houses. So at 9:00 in winter, we will have a slight impact right here and obviously right here. As it gets to 12:00 PM in winter, then you can see that the shadow of our building is heading across West Broad Street, so it really has no impact at all. And then at 3:00 PM in winter, it is all the way literally perpendicular to West Broad Street, and as it goes down later, it would just disappear. If we look at spring and fall, as the sun gets higher, we have almost no effect. At 9:00 in the morning, we have none at all. At 12:00 noon, and absolutely none at 3:00 in the afternoon. That's spring and fall. In summer, obviously, everything with the sun higher in the sky is better, and so that is the outline of the shadow we will cast in summer. This is, that's at 9:00 AM. This is at 12:00 noon, which obviously is affecting our pedestrian walkway. And this is at 3:00 PM in the afternoon, and it will just get longer as the evening wears on. So I think it's a fair statement that we have minimum effect from casting shadows, and I know that was a real concern. We hope that those slides will alleviate your concerns. We have a, we have a 69-second video, which will fly you around. We can do this once, we can do it twice, we can stop it at any point, but because, I was just told, we're running out of time, apologize for that, Mr. Mayor, but let's look at the video. And so Treat, run it. Obviously, we're starting high. The point of starting- The point of starting high is so that you can really see that very strong articulation, so it doesn't feel like one big building. It will feel like one, two, and three buildings as you're coming along west Broad Street. We drop down, you can see the entire frontage. So, retail here, the, Treat, did you stop it? Okay, keep it rolling. Just let's let the 69 seconds go by. This is the entrance into Harris Teeter's here. Harris Teeter's open all the way, so you will be able to look into the store both day and evening. There's our little terrace and the steps up you just saw. Now, we're going to fly up over the top and look at the east side, which is, look, you will see this as you're coming up west Broad Street, and then drop down again to fly you. That's ultimately the blank wall. And then, we're here on Annandale, and so, this is the closest point to Annandale, with the building set 50 feet back from there. That's the entrance in. And then, let's drive along Annandale, along the back, so you get a feeling of driving along Annandale, so you get the full impression of what the environment is going to be like. And then, flying up high again, you can see the extent of the planting that we will provide. And so, that is literally the animation. And so, we can do that again, but I think we're out of time, and so...
Over.
Gary, are you going to take over at this point?
Yeah, and again, I want to be sensitive to the planning commissioners, because they do have a CIP on the capital improvements project. So Gary, if you can, please give your presentation, and I want to make sure that the planning commissioners have time.
Anyway, I just briefly wanted to give some preliminary staff analysis on the status of some of the major comments and issues that you identified at your last work session. The adequacy of the landscape buffer, the adequacy of parking, the service drive impacts on the neighborhood, density and massing, the adequacy of building setbacks and stepbacks and traffic circulation. So I'm just going to take a couple minutes and just touch on that group, just very briefly. And this is a preliminary analysis, looking at the second submission. And in terms of the landscape buffer, there was a requirement to have that within the 20-foot setback, and that could either be a 20-foot landscape area or a combination of 15-foot of landscaping with wall. The developers indicated they're flexible on whether they do a wall for the whole run, is my understanding. So, this was a waiver for a buffer. They've effectively eliminated that waiver by providing what's required by code. There is one slight exception, and in the radius, when you first come in from Annandale, that turn there, they weren't able to get the full 15 feet for that. So technically, there is a waiver, but staff sees that as very acceptable and reasonable in the context of them meeting the majority of the area. The parking, there was comments that there was a significant reduction in parking requested by the developer previously, and that was almost 30%, which was higher than any project we had seen to date. They've been able to, after further code review and parking needs analysis, the requested parking reduction is actually down to 20% from 30% at the time. And this compares to mixed-use developments like the gateway that was recently approved, and that was at approximately 22%. The additional parking and the store-size ratio comparison, where they looked at other Harris Teeter units that existing in the marketplace now in this region, and what their square footage was compared to their parking on-site. And if you actually were to apply that on top of the 20% reduction, you would drop the reduction down to 15% overall, and down to 3% for the commercial element alone. Having one user, that's the primary user, it makes it a little easier to look at the parking, because you know what's going to be going there in terms of the use versus having a half dozen uses or a dozen uses that could range in parking demand. In terms of service drive impacts on the neighborhood, there was concern, you know, about unnecessary truck traffic, loading dock, associated noise. Staff considers it practical to separate truck and customer traffic to the site to the retail, and the developer did look at alternatives to move the service drives, but they weren't feasible due to a variety of reasons. The developer has made major changes to enclose the loading dock and the delivery areas and trash areas, and to mitigate the potential for noise impacts. They've also reversed the truck circulation to enter from Annandale Road and exit on Broad that will direct traffic to the east rather than potentially to the west towards the residential areas. So, the potential service drive impacts have been substantially mitigated and should be adequate with some further considerations. In terms of density and massing, the concern was the size of the proposed project, the extent of the buildings, and mainly the density and massing. The comprehensive plan and the city center plan supports higher-density development in the B2 central business district, more than any other commercial district, and up to 75 feet in height and more of an urban scale. So the special exception code then further provides for consideration of mixed-use projects for exemplary projects and projects that provide for desirable preferred uses, in this case, a grocery. And with height bonuses up to 150 feet for consideration of those. The mitigation of the potential impact of the height and density are oriented to the adjacent residential districts in the form of yard setbacks, which is the distance of the building from the property line, buffers, which are the landscape screen elements, and stepbacks, which are the distance of buildings' indentions or the steps. And these mitigation elements, as prescribed, have been within the city code and the special exception code. And the latest application appear to meet the buffer and actually exceed the setback and stepback elements in a variety of ways. So the density and mass are generally acceptable under the criteria that I just described. In terms of adequate building setback and stepbacks, these requirements have been articulated in the latest submission, and the setbacks are all met, the setbacks are all met, and the stepbacks, in most cases, exceed what would we look for. The roof plan that you saw earlier shows the extent of those stepbacks, and they're significant from the previous submission. In terms of traffic circulation, the traffic study's been updated. Staff's consultants are looking at it. Staff met with the applicant in the last couple of weeks, talked about some alternatives to address the traffic circulation in the area, so that's something that's ongoing as we explore those alternatives. Architecture on Annandale Road, there now is a stepback of 55 to 45 feet ranging on the face of the building, and then a three-story articulated front now, where it sort of looked like back of the house before. So at this point, the special exception is in a form that's ready for the city council to refer to boards and commissions. I think it's an opportunity for the general public, the citizen board and commissions, to look at this and provide comments, publicly receive this, and there's opportunities next month on which the city council could formally refer this to boards and commissions. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor.
All right. Why don't we give the planning commissioners an opportunity, since they've got another business matter after this?
I'm looking at everybody's notes, and we all have a lot, a really lot of questions. So, we're going to forego those questions. We have one that Lindy, okay. And what we'd like to do is take all of our questions and maybe talk to staff and talk to the developers separately, if that's okay.
And, Mr. Rogers, one thing I was going to mention is, if you all can just bear with us for a moment after your discussion, I want to try to set a process forward that may help accomplish what you're referring to.
It's just that we have, as you know, the CIP, and that we have a lot of questions about that coming up too. So, rather than go through all of my questions and all of his, we're going to ask a few, and then we'll listen to the process. Yes.
Thank you, and I hope that we get your questions, some sort of a copy of the questions that you all are doing, so we can get those answers too. But...
Very big, is that offering consolidation?
Okay, thank you. But throughout this wonderful information that you presented to us, you mentioned Big Chimneys Park quite often, but yet then in the proffer section, you did not mention. And since this has no open, this project has no open space, that we would like you, you know, perhaps consider, or at least I'm asking, and don't know how many other people might be interested in it, but we do have a park plan, master plan for Big Chimneys, and it was going to be included in the city center. And since it is a community park, you know, do some looking into it, please. But I appreciate all the information you've given us tonight, and thank you for working with the neighborhood.
Let me have just one other quick question. Just, in the last information we were given, the units had dropped from 294 to 282, and now it's 265. Can you tell me what the mix is for that 265?
It's...
No, it's not 265.
265 market rate units plus 17.
Plus 17, okay.
So we're still, we're at the 282 number.
So it's still...
I don't have the unit mix right on the...
I think that was in the staff report.
Well, no, that was in the staff report, but he had said 265.
Yeah, that was market rate rented.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So you split it out. Okay, yeah, because I was just curious, because the efficiency units in one bedroom had dropped quite a bit, but I think it's something we need to look at in terms of mix.
So, while we've got the planning commissioners, just wanted to propose a way forward. It sounds like the planning commissioners certainly have a lot of questions, concerns, and I imagine that the city council is going to have some questions and concerns that they'll be raising tonight. The sense that I have is that it may be worthwhile having the planning commission informally take a look at the project and, you know, essentially internally with staff, discuss it, now that everybody's been briefed on the changes, before council has its next work session on this. That way, we can be really informed by what you're thinking is, and again, this is not to circumvent the formal review process, so that will still happen, but I think it would be helpful to get some of the feedback from the planning commissioners, so we can keep this project moving and really allow the planning commissioners an opportunity to weigh in, which I don't think we can do this evening, so...
I think a lot of our questions were answered by the presentation, which was excellent. Thank you very much. And I'm getting a sense that we have four or five major things that we'd like to at least talk to Jim and get a little bit of a staff briefing, and that, an informal staff discussion would really be helpful to us.
All right. So why don't we, unless there's any objections, take that approach on, unless there's any feedback on that? And again, to be clear, it would be informal at this point, and if the project does move forward, then through the boards and commission formal review process, the planning commission certainly would be able to have as many work sessions as they felt they needed to have to work through the issues. So, in no way is this to be viewed as sort of jumping that process through. It's to help council have a little bit more information before we take the project up at a more detailed work session, because I think we're all getting the information now. Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a really good idea. I'd like to get as many of these fundamental issues resolved at the stage as possible. And we know there are some fundamental issues. The planning commission has some. We'll have some which we'll talk about. So I think we're better off with a process that frontloads as much of that as possible, because I know you're going to be more willing to hear us and make changes now if you know that down the road, you're not going to have to make more, and you go through successive stages of that. So, I think this is a really good idea, and I look forward to really trying to address some fundamental issues, and I'll be mentioning some of those later, earlier rather than later in the process. Thanks.
So Chair Rogers, what I propose to do then is, once I have a chance to sit down with staff and try to work out a little bit further of the schedule, we'll certainly let you know and let Jim know, so that can be conveyed to the planning commissioners as far as when we're looking at having this come back to a work session for the council. So hopefully, you all can meet before that. Between Jim, White, and myself, I think we can try to at least try to find the dates based on what you all have going on. Okay. So why don't we turn it to council members? Thank you to planning commissioners. You're welcome to stick around if you can, but I have a feeling you guys have to run to your...
Busy, Mr. Mayor.
And again, for the public's benefit, you know, again, I think the planning commissioners have questions and a lot to say about this, but they have to get the CIP or the capital improvements project going tonight, so that's why they're not saying all that much tonight, because they have to get that other order of business done, or else it messes up the entire CIP and...
It's not that we don't want to talk about it.
Yeah, it's not for lack of...
Not that any of us are, you know, not talking.
Yeah, so, all right. Why don't we turn to council members? Why don't we just go down the line?
Phil?
First to Phil.
Start at the other end, not on the main.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Tartar.
Sure.
You know, there's a Persian word for what happens on this council a lot, and that's called tarof, and it's exchanging pleasantries by trading off who's going to go. So, Mr. Tartar.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for your very nice and informative presentation. I do have a few questions and comments. Some are directed to you all, some are directed to staff, and maybe some are for council. I guess one of them deals with the height that you proposed along Broad Street, and it seems to me this may be kind of setting a new standard for our street wall in the city. And is Jim still here, Jim Snyder, or did he head off? Looks like our director of planning left, but I guess I would just make sure, there he comes. Jim, whether this is in fact setting a new height for our street wall on Broad Street, whether there are any other buildings of this height in the city, maybe you could comment as to that?
Well, I believe this is taller than other buildings, but we have a number of buildings which have six stories above a tall level of retail. For example, if you look at the Spectrum, and also the Byron, all of those have six stories of residential above a tall level of retail. This site has some slope, also because of the way it's articulated, you don't have any full street wall, which those other buildings have behind the retail. It is somewhat different in the sense of you have components of buildings that voids along the, along the, taller, but it's articulated more than the other building. Six stories of residential above.
I guess I just want to make sure that we give consideration that we are setting kind of a new standard, maybe, for what Broad Street is going to look like, and that we don't go, you know, without our eyes open on what we're doing.
I think that's a very point. Of course, we are in the B2 area, we're moving towards the center of town. This is where we have the highest density zoning and the greatest permissions. So if there is an appropriate area for tall buildings, towards the center of the city.
I'm also concerned about the pedestrian experience, particularly as relates to Broad Street. I think it actually is a bit tight in front of this building, and I don't know whether staff's come out on this issue, whether we want to have the raised planters, or whether we're going to have trees that are essentially at grade without the planter edge, because I think with the planter edge, it's going to be extremely tight. It takes up an awful lot of our sidewalk width by having to set that back a foot and a half off a back of curb, then having a brick set on edge, then your planter, and then another brick set on edge. Has the staff come to a determination of whether they...
I think one of the things we want to do is continue the feel of Broad Street streetscape, so that there is continuity with what has been done. Question of the exact details should be worked out in site plan. Hotel was done at Hilton Garden Inn, I think the materials were used, but there was... I don't think we'd have to sit down and work. don't think we'd have to sit down and work it. Certainly, there are ways to incorporate Broad Street streetscape elements, but also have some flexibility. That is the type of thing that could be talked about in terms of the SE and then make more finals part of the final site plan, which would, which will have to come through in more detail.
But...
I will show up and find details.
Well, if we end up using the raised planters, I think the building needs to be set back farther from Broad Street, because I don't think we're going to have an adequate clear width for people to traverse, particularly if people bring carts and little, you know, things to carry groceries in, and also if you want to have some outdoor seating. I think it's tight. Frankly, I'm not sure outdoor seating is going to work, given a 20-foot back of curb to face a building, the little of a shy zone up against the building, et cetera. So I'd like to, I appreciate the things you're doing to enhance the pedestrian experience, and I guess I would ask that you consider the kind of activities that might occur there and make sure we have adequate space for them to occur. And I guess to that same idea, I would prefer to have the raised plaza actually at grade in front of the Harris Teeter, so that folks walking down the street don't kind of have a wall in front of them there, but actually have the ability to sort of interact and go directly up and use this plaza without having to go up a set of stairs behind a wall.
Is it appropriate for us to respond, Mr. Mayor?
Why don't we get through comments and then come back? And again, council members need to then turn to the budget, so.
The, I would also encourage you to continue to work with the neighbors. I know you have done that in the past, but I, I know they still have issues that remain, and I know you guys have been good at meeting with them. I'd continue and strongly encourage you to continue that process. Is there an area for people to drop off? Like in other words, if somebody comes and wants to drop off, someone to go in and get a gallon of milk, is there a drop-off area or anything like that for the people who want to just run in at all? Well, I'll tell you what, I guess we don't want to have responses. I don't know what you want.
Yeah, I think it's best that we just...
Okay, well, put that maybe on your list of things.
Yeah, have the developer hear our comments and concerns, along with staff, so if it's directed towards staff, that's appropriate as well, but...
Okay, well, I'll tell you, I think it is important to consider, because I think you are going to find folks who are going to want to run in for a gallon of milk and then not come on a wing through the garage. And so I think it probably is appropriate to give consideration of where those people might pull off to the side or whatever without clogging up your, you know, your path. I still am concerned about left turns on West Broad Street, people going westerly on Broad Street. I think there are going to be folks who are going to see it for the first time and going to want to make that left turn where there's no left turn, and they'll end up making U-turns farther down Broad Street. And so I think we can't let that issue just lie. I think we have to really give some thought as to trying to solve that problem. I think some consideration on, should be given as well to even a minor setback on Broad to, as far as the building goes, as you go past the base, maybe a tiny setback to break up the massing a little bit, instead of having a 90-foot or whatever it is, street wall on Broad, even a minor setback at the, the end of the base, the first level, is something to consider. I'd also wonder if you have hours of loading that you're proposing, in other words, a period of time that you're proposing for loading at the dock, and if so, maybe you could share that with, with the community and with the citizens. Let's see what else we've got here. I would also suggest, I know there's been some discussion on who will maintain the street trees and other things, I would encourage the staff to, to have this be a transition where we start having developers maintain the tree pits, et cetera, and the other things associated with their project. I think it would also be good to have a street-level perspective, not necessarily the flyover, but actually have a perspective from street level right in front of the Harris Teeter, which I don't think we have yet. I'd be curious to know whether there's any bike racks or bike, you know, storage on grade, not necessarily two levels down, but actually for people who want to bike to your facility. Would like some more information about transit subsidies, and particularly if there's any, the TDM has anything about getting people to Metro. In other words, is there any actual, you know, we're going to have a shuttle bus, or we're going to do what you might do to get people to Metro. To me, that's kind of the biggest transit that we have to offer here is the Metro, and we need to find ways to get people to get on the Metro. The street, the smart cards, I think are a good idea to give new residents smart cards, but I think it'd be great if you had a plan to really get, move those people to the Metro stations, how that might happen. A capital bike share, I think is great, to the extent you guys are able to participate. I think that'd be fabulous. In looking at the one fly-around, it looked like the building is cantilevered in the front. Is it cantilevered, or is that just, no, it's not cantilevered, I don't know why. It looked like the front after the base was cantilevered. Okay. And I'd also like to know what the sidewalk width is on Annandale Road, when you might have a chance to speak to that. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave. Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you. I'm going to really limit my comments and questions tonight to two fundamental issues, and as I've met with the neighborhood over the, over the months, these, to me, have risen to the top. The first one is that as a developer, you say a lot about urban development, and yet this development looks suburban. It looks suburban in size, it looks suburban in scale. I think they ask a legitimate question. Why so large? Why a Harris Teeter so large? What's the square footage? And here's an information request. I'd be interested in knowing the square footage of the Harris Teeter at Ballston, and the square footage of all the Harris Teeters built in this region in the last 10 years, so we can get some sense as to whether the view of this being a suburban store basically planted in the middle of Falls Church is reality or not. So that's point number one. Point number two, the obvious thing about this site is that one part of it is right up against the residential neighborhood, yet consistently, the loading docks and the major commercial activity in this project is right up against the residential area. You've got a significant site here, why don't you just move it? And that's a fundamental question, that the neighborhood has a very legitimate question. Why do you have to put all this vehicular activity right next to their backyard? So that's a fundamental issue. It is, when you look at this site before we even knew what was going to go in here, the obvious issue that had to be dealt with from a neighborhood standpoint is moving the traffic away from the neighborhood, and yet consistently, the plan calls for putting that commercial traffic right up against the neighborhood. So I have a legitimate question there. Why can't you put that vehicular traffic, just move it to another part of the site, on the eastern part of the site, or wherever else you can put it? So that's a second question. The third question I have relates to the massing and scale. I work in the private sector, so I'm sensitive to the need to make a profit, but I'm looking at a massive amount of building, a massive height, unprecedented height for Falls Church. And the question is, do you really need that and why? And I'd like to see the financials to get some idea as to why that's the case. So there, I'm just going to focus on these issues. I've worked with the neighborhood, I understand what their fundamental issues are, and we need answers to these fundamental questions, because to them, and I think frankly to me, this looks like a suburban development, although talked about in urban terms, plopped right in the middle of what's increasingly become an urban area. So I look forward to, as I said, these are some fundamental issues, and I look forward to working through these with you, hopefully to everyone's satisfaction. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor Snyder. Ms. Barry?
Well, I certainly align myself with, with Mr. Snyder's comments, and I was actually going to save those comments in the event that we, we have another, another go-round here and on the, at the table. So I have very specific questions, and then, then again, I would, I'd like to sort of, sort of end with a commentary. My specific questions are, who maintains, and Mr. Tartar began to speak to this, who maintains the common space between Harris Teeter and the neighbors, this, all this, this planting that's going to go on, that's going to require a certain amount of maintenance? The, coming out of Harris Teeter to Annandale, is that a right turn only, both for trucks and cars, or is it, is it right and left turn? I was just trying to think of how the traffic was going to move. I presume that, and I'm pleased to hear that there are numbers that suggest of four trucks and, and I think it was 14 vans per day. I'm sure that, that gives the neighbors some sense of confidence. But I presume that all of that vehicular traffic falls under the noise ordinance so that nothing can happen between 4:00 and 7:00 in the morning and after 7:00 PM in the evening, I'm presuming. And then I was interested in the commentary on the, on the step backs, because unless you're counting the enclosed loading dock as a step back, I was unaware of any substantial step back between the neighbors and the, and the Harris Teeter. So, so those are my, my questions that require a factual answer, and then if we have an opportunity, again, I'd sort of like to align myself with Mr. Snyder's comments, both about massing, about density, about service vehicles in, right next to neighborhoods. And again, hearken back to some of our, as you often pointed out, and I, I'm very appreciative of this, some of our cities, you know, vision, goals, mission, and, and is this the kind of development that we want that reflects that which, that which is, that which is the city of Falls Church? I mean, I'm just wondering, because I would agree with Mr. Snyder, what this looks like is a large suburban development in an urban setting.
Barry, Mr. Ken?
I am concerned there won't be a Falls Church if we don't get some economic development going. So this is all very good about the vision, but there has to be a city around which that vision actually... I've turned the microphone into a...
Yes.
Weapon here. But I have a couple of questions, having stated that. The first thing is really not just, it leads to the next point. The $22 million net present value has to assume today's interest rates, because that's virtually the same as the nominal value of 1.32 multiplied by 20. So that, that discount rate isn't probably the most accurate for 20-year estimate. The reason I raise that is that I'd be curious if, if the part of the apartment buildings that were closest to the residences were steered, what would be the per-unit impact or per-five-unit impact on your, on your rate of return, and how much cash at an appropriately discounted rate would you need to collect to compensate for that lost income? Can you follow me on that? That would be an interesting number, because in, in other words, if we were to, and I'm making any recommendations held you harmless for that, what would it cost? All right? But not at, not at 2% or 3%. Got to be a realistic discount rate, okay? The other on the, in transportation, the only thing I'd like to add is that any transportation approach that relies on the private sector has to be understood that the private sector is there to make money, and if their business model doesn't produce money, it's gone. I mentioned this before it happened, but Zipcar was purchased by Avis, so we don't know what form Zipcar is, so that can't be a model. It's got to be something that isn't dependent on today's company's business model, if it's going to sustain. Next is, it's really, this is not an ask, this is just a technical question. Is it technically feasible to go one parking level down further, if there was to be public parking as part of this? This is not an ask, this is really, I mean, is like, below the third level, is there like uranium or something like that that would get in the way?
Even worse, bedrock.
Or bedrock, yeah, which you have to, what, you know, is it technically feasible? That's not an ask, that's just to know if that's, if that's possible to do. The other thing is about future promises. My experience firsthand is that while the people who are indicating that things will be done in the future are sincere, you may not be here when the issue comes up. I mean, people change jobs, people move on, et cetera, et cetera, and if there's not really a form of enforceability to the future offer, and you know, we're going to review this, we're going to do this, we're going to maintain that, there has to be some form, I don't know if it's a bonding issue or what, but it's, it's like, not enough that a goodwill or an intention is what carries that forward for the reasons I just mentioned. But on the whole, I, I'm more up on the project than perhaps others are.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Rushmark and your team for your process of involvement with the community. I think the thing that I would hope most would come out of this, in addition to the tax revenue, but don't let me get ahead of myself, the thing that I would most hope to come out of this would be that this process be a model for developer engagement with the community, to try to meet as many concerns as it is reasonable to be able to meet. And I think you're making progress, good progress, I would say, in that area. I'd share some of the same questions about maintenance of plantings, just my experience with developments done 20, 25 years ago, promises made by developers, some are kept, some are not. Some are actually very well-kept. Over on my end of town, it's obviously a tiny project, but the Taco Bell has probably got the best landscaped commercial property over the past 20 years that I can think of. So I think it is possible, but it's very important, particularly on the backside, when those, you know, tall, skinny evergreens get taller and skinnier, their shading and buffering effect, I think, diminishes. So that's a really small bore concern, but I think it's important to the people who live there, and it should be. Not, everything needs to be said, but not, everybody has to say it, so I'll not repeat. You know, we talk here a lot about, why, why can't we get development going here in Falls Church? Why is it so hard? And I think we all know that the answer is, because every building has to solve every problem. You know, it's got to be, it's got to be commercially tenanted, it's got to be residentially tenanted, it's got to be parked, it's got to be designed, it's got to be lead, it's got to be high quality, it's got to meet school costs, you know, transportation demands, it's got to do everything. And it's challenging for any building to do everything. I do think that you all have made pretty good progress on most of those areas, and I'm encouraged by that. If the question is, you know, am I ready to send this out to boards and commissions for their input, particularly for the Architectural Advisory Board and their expertise on some of the design questions we're talking about, yes, I am ready to do that. I think Ms. Barry and Mr. Snyder asked the right question, you know, does this reflect the city of Falls Church's vision? I'm leaning a little bit pretty strongly, I think, more towards a yes, just because of my experience, you know, on EDA, we bought this land, we banked it, sat on it for years and years, hoping that we could make something big out of it, and, and this is something significant. I mean, to me, it's a plus that a significant company like Harris Teeter is looking to do something significant here. I, I'm tired of having everybody say, well, it's better in Arlington, it's newer in Arlington, it's bigger, it's better in Fairfax. You know, I think this is a chance for us to do something at the appropriate scale that is a big thing for Falls Church, and I do think it can be a catalyst for development further up and down Broad Street, where we really need to get a city center going. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. So I'm going to start with some of my thinking and then try to capture and summary what I've heard from, from council members and some from the limited comments we had this evening from the planning commission. And I just wanted to echo the concerns that were raised about the massing and scale. I think Rushmark has done a good job of trying to address some of the comments. I wish this was, we were here a few months ago. In some ways, I think this is what we should have seen coming out of the box, rather than a few months later. You know, in some ways, it's, I feel like we're at draft one, you know? Now, now we've got something that we can really begin to, to deal with and, and address, but the massing, the scale, I still have concerns about, so I want to just echo some of the comments that were heard this evening. Also show the concerns about the loading as well. And, and it's a comment that I made, I believe, the first time I saw the project. This, this project still feels as though it's something that would be done in Fairfax, planted on a small footprint in Falls Church. So it still has that, that suburban feel to it with the number of curb cuts that we talked about, this notion of you can't have commercial and residential traffic in the same flow. It's true if you're out in suburbia, it's not necessarily true if you're in a, in a true urban environment, where you try to really limit the curb cuts, try to push everything into one entrance and make that flow. So there's other projects that do that very well in an urban setting. So there's other projects that do that very well in an urban setting. That's a concern that I had raised earlier. This project still feels, as Mr. Snyder had mentioned, very suburban. It feels suburban on scale, but it also feels suburban in certain detailed situations like the curb cuts, how the traffic is flowing, et cetera. Two, one comment that hasn't been addressed, and I understand that staff has talked to the developer about this, and I think Councilmember Carter was getting to this point about the entrance, the left-hand turn coming into the site on Broad. I think that's still an issue that needs to be addressed. I don't know if there are viable options on that. To me, it would make sense that the project's actual commercial vehicular entrance lined up with the light that exists on Little Falls. I know that that's been discussed, I don't know if that's feasible or not. I'm sure we could come up with 10 million reasons of why it's not, but probably, problem-solving for that, I think, is going to go a long way if we can make that work, if that's an option. Otherwise, the traffic flow through the site is going to be rather interesting, to say the least, and I'm not hearing any ideas of how that traffic is going to flow throughout the site, through Broad, in that area. So if it's not, if it's not doable where that entrance can be moved, we need to have a better understanding of what the traffic flow is going to look like. In something plain English, and I hate to say it, I get the consultants, but none of us are traffic experts, we're not going to dive into that level of detail, but what I'm hearing about the traffic flow and how we're going to mitigate it just is not, is not making a heck of a lot of sense right now of how things are going to move around the site. I think those are the issues that I have listed, and, you know, on the general topic, you know, I think we all want to see commercial development in the city of Falls Church, I certainly do, I've been a big proponent of that. But at the same time, I think we need to be cautious about, you know, what projects we're taking on and still making sure that we are staying within the vision of Falls Church and what we expect, to make sure that we're getting quality projects with that, which I think this can certainly be at the end of the day, and I hope that, working with staff, working with the developers, we can get there. But I see some major issues still remaining with the project that need to get addressed. So I'll leave it at that and then try to summarize what I've heard this evening, including some of my own comments as well. So we had several council members talk about massing and scaling. Two was the loading, the loading dock and where that's located, along with traffic being alongside the neighborhood as well, the suburban store and suburban scale that we talked about, the step backs not being visible, and I'll say, you know, from my point of view, I know other council members have talked about it, if we're counting the enclosed loading now as a step back, I don't think that's what the code envisioned. Certainly, that's not what I'm getting from it, so that's something that I'll be considering as I look at the criteria that there is the requirement for stepping the building back, and I'm not seeing that articulated against the abutting residential zone. Two is the, or going down the list was the entrance on Broad Street, which I just highlighted, sidewalk widths on all sides of the building, and I believe Councilmember Carter spoke fairly eloquently to that, so I'm not going to belabor that point. And then one final item was that we're still seeing some articulations that are showing blank walls that still need to get addressed, and I know that the developer's planning on doing that, but I just highlight that's still an outstanding item that needs to get worked on. And I've got a list of items that were open from before that I'm happy to share with staff so they can fold it into their documents that will go back to the developer. So any parting shots? Mr. Callan and Ms. Berry.
My points were not raised at any of the points. So I would like you to also include what I mentioned as part of the, I mean, I'm sympathetic. I approach things, my concern, excuse me, is a little bit different in part because I live in the world of, you know, how are we going to fund the city and so forth, so I tend to gravitate to some of those issues and concerns. I would like to have something really successful here so we gravitate, we become a center of gravity for more business, and then when we become less risky, because this is sort of a beta project, then we can start to make really increase the demands and the proffers and whatnot. But that's what my concern is, especially looking at the budget numbers that we have coming up. That tends to dominate a lot of my thinking about how are we going to make it as a city the next five years? How are we going to do it?
Why don't we add, the economics of this project are in the right direction? How about that?
No, what about, no, I raised other points as well.
Were there others that I'm missing, Mr. Callan?
Yes, I asked for the calculation.
Yeah, I think we have that. I think on specific requests, I'm not going to try to summarize those and take up more time. I think staff has got those. So I think I was trying to hit on the major issues.
They're just for the developers, not for staff.
Right, but staff, I think, has got the list that they're tracking. So Gary agreed that he was going to track the specific items. Again, I was trying to hit the highlights. All right, any other parting shots? Ms. Berry, I believe you had something, and then why don't we go to Mr. Carter?
You know, I also wanted to end on a somewhat sympathetic and upbeat note because I know I certainly had questions. I really do believe that this is a seminal project. I think this is a very important development in a very important location of the city. So we want to do this right, and I use the word seminal appropriately because I think, I see this leading to vibrant development throughout this corridor. But as many council members have said, I remain concerned, and we don't need to belabor this about the massing, the size, the service roads, et cetera. I would like to make this viable for Rushmark and its client, but in my personal experience, which obviously has colored what I have to say here, the city has jumped into commercial projects which have yielded, too often, empty buildings and marginal benefits. I have no reason to believe that this will not be successful, but I would, I think basically I would like to see this project meet Falls Church's needs rather than Falls Church meet this project's needs.
Mr. Carter?
If I could, yeah, I would just like to also end on a, I don't know, upbeat is the right word, but I tell you, I did have a lot of comments and I do have a lot of concerns that I think we can work through, but I am confident that we can work through these issues. We have a high-quality developer, a high-quality architect and engineer, and the whole team are capable, I think, of solving the problems and concerns that have been articulated tonight. I think this project in this area can be a catalyst for a new vibrant downtown, which is what we need, we need it desperately, I think, and to create a pedestrian-friendly, walkable downtown, and this can be the anchor for that. And I'm confident that development on either side and across the street will occur, you know, once this project is completed, once it's done. So I think there's a lot of issues to work through, a lot of work that remains to be done, but I am confident we can get to the finish line, and so I encourage you to keep working on it and we'll work with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So why don't we take a few-minute break, and then what I'll do, council members, is I'll get together with Wyatt and Jim about trying to figure out the calendar a little bit based on what the Planning Commission's got going on.
Yeah, and I do think it's important to have some more discussion about some of the issues the council's raised because I think, you know, some of these are really seminal, particularly the orientation of the building, entrances to it. The principle of urbanity really boils down to pedestrians walking in the city, which we don't have enough of, so where the main entrance is to the parking garage is important. So I would respectfully disagree with Mayor's suggestion that it ought to be at the end of Little Falls. What you're really trying to do is have as many people walking to this store as possible. You have some 5,000 people within a half-mile radius. You want them walking into the front door, you want them going to all of the other stores, all up and down Broad Street. What we don't have here are pedestrians. We need to create a situation where any new building like this can help foster that. And so I think we should have a good discussion about what is urban and what is suburban, and talk about how projects like this and others would work. So not to be disagreeable, but I think there are some, the real question of what is urban and what's not, and how this would relate to other businesses and other opportunities for pedestrians walking to businesses up and down Broad Street and from the neighborhoods to the store is a very important issue.
But Jim, I take your points, and that may be the best sighting if we're trying to make it a pedestrian environment. Certainly, I don't want to change that, but the reality is that there are going to be cars, we know what the counts are, and we need to make sure it's flowing through Broad and through the community appropriately. I absolutely agree with the vision that we want to make it a pedestrian-friendly environment. We're not quite there yet, and I hope we can get there, and one of the reasons why I commented on the 60,000-square-foot retail store is that's, again, a suburban, I'm envisioning a suburban grocery store when we're talking about that size. If we're talking about a neighborhood grocer, that's a different vision. But I think we can talk about that coming up. So what I propose that we do at this point is I'll get with Wyatt and Jim and try to figure out when the Planning Commission has availability on their calendar to meet on this, so we have some of their thinking that we didn't have the opportunity to get tonight to work through. And then perhaps add a work session or two to work through some of the issues that Jim raised, just so we can have time with staff to go through some of these issues. So it sounds like we may need some additional work sessions on the project, so, which means we, just so council is aware, what this means is that on some of the evenings where we're going to have work sessions dealing with the budget, we're going to have to double time it.
Extra Monday meetings. Yes. Fifth Monday, fifth Monday.
Fifth Monday meetings. We may need to add a work session dealing with development issues, which gets us to our next topic that we're going to talk about, is what those budget work sessions look like. So we're going to have to work efficiently during those budget work sessions, but we can get there in a second. All right.
Always.